We are convened. Mr. Leahy, we have a presentation today.
Yes, sir, Mayor and members of council. Brian Solis is here, and he is going to continue our discussion on shared mobility services, more specifically motorized scooters. And you may recall, we briefed you on this last fall. You actually enacted an ordinance that would require that these devices be licensed under a franchise agreement, and Brian is going to bring us up to speed on that today.
Thank you, Mr. Leahy, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Stiles. Happy New Year, and thank you for having me. And like Mr. Leahy was saying, I'm back to talk about shared mobility services and picking up from whence we last left off, which was your approval of an ordinance in November that required, took advantage of the state-enabling legislation to require that shared mobility devices like e-scooters have franchise licenses to operate in localities, in our case, in Virginia Beach. That became effective December 16th, and since that time, the two vendors that were operating in Virginia Beach have pulled their devices from public property. Mr. Reed Teschner is here from Byrd, for example, representing one of the two vendors that were operating in Virginia Beach. And so today, because a lot of the information is similar to when we last discussed this topic in your informal session on October 15th, some of it's going to be rehashing, but then we have kind of fine-tuned the franchise license criteria that we are asking potential vendors to respond to. So I'm going to go through, as a reminder, some of the stakeholder feedback and community survey information that we received, go over the criteria in some detail, and hopefully get a consensus on that criteria, and then review some recommended next steps with you to see if you agree with that direction. So we had 14 meetings primarily through late summer and really throughout the summer. A number of groups that either are very specific or umbrella organizations, representing a number of groups, including the Virginia Beach Council Civic Associations, your Resort Advisory Commission, Bayfront Advisory Commission, Bike Ways and Trails Advisory Commission, some of these, your liaisons too, so you may be familiar with or may have been at the meeting during that, and all the way to our Restaurant Association, our Central Business District Association, Hotel Association. And we received some valuable feedback during that time that was, in a lot of ways, sometimes more specific, but sometimes in agreement with a lot of the responses that we received during the community survey, the online survey that was running online on the VBGOV.com site, parallel with those stakeholder meetings. So I'm not going to go through all these specifically because a lot of them, if not all of them, are part in some way of the franchise license criteria that we're proposing to be part of issuing the license to potential vendors. It may not be specifically word-for-word, but for example, limiting the total number of scooters in the city is one that we are recommending at this time as a next step. Limiting the number of riders on the scooters, and I'm going to go with these more specifics. But when it came time for folks to provide some open-ended comments about e-scooters in general, this is kind of the wordle that came out from it in terms of some of the terms that were prevalent in folks' responses. And there were a number of unprompted responses, 129,000 entries and comments overall from over 5,000 respondents. And I do want to emphasize, this is not a statistically reliable survey, but it is just a tool that is used from the city's website to get feedback on various topics at any given time. So you have franchise license criteria, and you have the law, you have the city code. What is in the city code now, there's a lot of different provisions related to folks operating devices in the public rights of way, but a couple that speak to motorized scooters are, number one, you enacted an ordinance in August that, among a couple other things, prohibited motorized scooters on roadways, the roadway itself of roadways of greater than 25 miles per hour. We propose that we retain that and keep that in the city code. Now, they could be run parallel on shared use paths and sidewalks, but with a lot of other different rules to help have compatible behavior with pedestrians and other users of sidewalks and shared use paths. So again, retain the, obviously, the requirement that you put in in November to require franchise licenses. And that way, we're able to have a relationship with the vendors, share data, and really find out how well these devices are working as a mode of transportation in our city, as well as a number of other rules to go by. And then we are proposing through this process to allow, again, these e-scooters on the shared lane on Atlantic Avenue, but with a lot of different additional provisions. And I'll go over what those are, including designated parking, including speed limit that's geofenced, and a number of other criteria. So I want to thank our planning department, who has helped develop these parking corral guidelines that went through the entire resort area to identify potential parking or staging locations. This is where folks would go to use the app to rent a scooter. I'll talk about some other things about, that's potentially where vendor employees could be staged to help educate folks on wearing a helmet or how to use the scooter in general, that type of thing. But it would also be where they would return the scooters to within the resort area in particular. And we do believe for the designated areas that having them in groups of eight as a maximum was appropriate when we looked at other criteria from other localities around the country, but then in other parts of the city where it's not as densely developed, grouping them in groups of four might be more appropriate in more suburban areas of the city. So let's just start top, and this is a lot of words, but I'm just going to go, you know, the highlights. And that is, should you give affirmative direction at the end of this briefing, we would issue an RFP, a request for proposals, both through the city's online procurement platform, DemandStar, but also directly to the vendors that have indicated an interest in working in Virginia Beach and providing this service in Virginia Beach. We do propose that at this time that there'll be a maximum of 1,000 scooters. I think Norfolk right now, they went from initially 500 to now 1,100. Within, I guess, about six months, they've been operating in, through a franchise license in Norfolk since June, and with that provider. And that if you have up to four, we want, we believe it would be fair to issue up to four franchise licenses based on the number of vendors that have indicated an interest. But if you should only have one or two, they may apply for and have the ability to rent more than 250 scooters. Depends on the number of qualified responders to the RFP. Within the resort area, we do propose that there be additional geofence within the resort area, which is defined as the resort area strategic growth area map, which basically extends from Bird Neck Road to the Atlantic Ocean, to Rudy Inlet, and then basically to about 42nd Street. And that, of that total, 1,000 scooters, no more than 40% be within that geographic area. Some of the complaints that we received, frankly, during the, when there weren't franchise license guidelines, there were roughly 800 e-scooters that were primarily in the resort area, did not seem to be as compatible of a use. Yes, sir.
Mr. Ward.
Just to say up to 400 scooters per licensee.
No total.
Well, it says.
I'm sorry, if it's a typo, I apologize. I meant total.
Okay.
Yes, sir, thank you for picking that out. And then additional geofenced areas based on some feedback that we received during the stakeholder involvement process. We do propose that these be in place for at least a year of the franchise license to see how they work over that first year. In terms of geographic areas, this is the resort area, and then the majority of what's shown on that map would be defined as the Shore Drive corridor, based on the feedback we received from Bayfront Advisory Commission, the Shore Drive Community Coalition. So in terms of costs, we did sharpen our pencil, and these fees are lower than when I last briefed you because we received some feedback from some of you as well as the business community about what would be fair in terms of operating in Virginia Beach as a business and as a provider of a service. So these fees are more in line with what we also looked at with Norfolk and Richmond in particular, and I have a slide at the end of your briefing that compares some of that. So bottom line, it's $50 per scooter to start out, and 50 cent per day per scooter for basically rental. And then one-time startup cost of $5,000 per licensee to help the city fund all of the signage and the parking corrals that we would put in place to help with enforcement. That's the purpose of that fee. The revenue from the rest of those fees could help with the city management of the program, which has primarily been police and public works, but you may also choose to direct it towards Bike Ways and Trails, for example, there's a nexus there, so.
Rosemary.
Is that $50 per year, or is it?
It's $50 per year, yes, ma'am, and then $50 per scooter per day.
Fifty scooters.
50 cent, sorry, 50 cent per scooter per day. So that $50 would be per year per scooter.
Above the $50.
What it equates to, I beg, what it equates to is $12,500 per vendor per year for the license, or $50,000 for four, if there were four of them. And then 50 cent times 250 scooters is $45,625, times four providers is $182,500, or is what the revenue would be for those fees. In terms of violations, there are some franchise agreements that already operate in the city. You have Megabus, for example, a lot of folks may not know, but you have a service, a region-wide service that serves the Northeast corridor. It's a coach bus service, and the stop is at 19th Street, the former Dome site. And they also pay the city to operate a bus stop in the rideaway, for example, so this is very similar to that. It may be revoked should they violate the clauses of the license. Inventory replacement technology is moving very fast, so if there are e-scooters that come out with, the vendor has a new model that is safer or more efficient, that we propose that they keep the inventory refreshed to serve our residents and visitors. Norfolk required that all e-scooters be brand-new when they started to operate in their city. It's just a business practice that we're recommending to ensure we have the safest, most efficient devices serving our residents and visitors. And then in terms of speed limits, we are recommending that overall there be a 15 mile per hour cap on the governor, if you will, on the devices, and that Atlantic Avenue and Cape Henry Trail be at 10 miles per hour. We believe that because they're shared paths, that they should have that limit. And then on sidewalks, we're recommending in order to be compatible with bicyclists where they're permitted, and pedestrians, that it'd be a maximum 10 mile per hour on sidewalk, and that's a maximum. So these are the components of, as we go down the home stretch here, these are the components of the RFP that are best practices to ask for, for these devices to operate on public property throughout the city. It's a maintenance plan, how they plan on maintaining the devices to ensure they're functioning well, a management plan in terms of how they plan on, along with staffing, how they plan on managing the devices on the ground so that we have somebody, and our residents and visitors have somebody on the ground to interact with in terms of using the devices and managing the inventory, ensuring they're charged, ensuring that they're staged properly and upright, ensure that they are meeting the criteria of the franchise license. Safety plan also speaks to impaired rider prevention. There are tools in place where, say, late night in particular, that pop up on the screen before you're able to rent the device that tries its best to ensure you're not impaired when riding. So there's a variety of different tools that exist to try to ensure safe rider behavior. Data sharing is a big piece of this. I mean, in a lot of ways, this is a smart cities type of initiative in that we're in a shared world now in terms of economy, everything from Airbnb to ride-sharing to bike-share. It's valuable and important in managing the program that we share data. We do not want the consumers' information, but we do want it aggregated to be able to make decisions about how well these devices are serving as a transportation option in your city, both as to our visitors and our residents. And it is best practices around the world to share data. And so part of that, this franchise licensing requirement would be to share a certain amount of data, and we are recommending that we procure a consultant to help us manage that data because it will be a lot, and I'll have a slide on that to further explain that. Education is a big piece of this, so we would propose that these vendors provide us their plan for educating riders in terms of how they would educate them, where they would educate them, and how frequently. In Virginia Beach, we obviously, with tens of millions of visitors to our city, it's important, because we have a high turnover, that there be a robust education plan, because the same visitor that you may have educated two days prior may have left the city, and a new one is in its place, in their place, so it's important to keep that education frequent. Provisions for special events, so we would propose that the vendors and the city help work with event applicants to determine where may or may not be appropriate to rent scooters within certain geographic areas, particularly the oceanfront. Some events may want scooters as an opportunity to get folks around the resort, others like races that have road closures will definitely want them to be prohibited within those street closure areas, for example. So insurance, last time we had your risk manager here, but these are basic insurance requirements for any time you're operating on city property is, would be a requirement in the RFP. So as we hit the home stretch here, this is an example of what Arlington County uses to manage its shared devices, in this case, cars, scooters, and bikes within Arlington County, and it helps to monitor the number that are operating in the city. It can monitor the amount and type within a geographic area, like I was telling you, the geofenced area of the oceanfront, and it can help provide analytics about a heat map of where the e-scooters were used the most and where they weren't. And it also helps inform the companies of where they are seeing a lot of their customers use the devices as well. So it's a shared, sharing the data helps both sides of the equation there. In terms of moving forward, based on your feedback today, we would issue the RFP within the next few business days, no later than a week from today, and we would leave that open for 30 to 45 days. We would have a group of staff to evaluate the proposals based on the most responsive to the criteria, and then we would come back to you in March, likely to be early March, early to mid-March, with recommended awarding franchise licenses to the recommended vendors that were most responsive to the RFP. And then the goal would be to have that in place by the beginning of April as we hit into our warm season. At the end, on your presentations, there's a very brief comparison chart of some other localities and our fees in comparison to those. So with that, I'll stand by for any questions you have.
Okay, Rosemary, then Lewis, and then Jess.
Are we going to have rules for, like, one rider per scooter, no one under a certain age limit?
Yes, the, we're proposing as part of the criteria, and all the e-scooter companies that I'm aware of have a requirement of the one rider per device, and yes, that would be a requirement. The challenge is in enforcement, the enforcement piece, but it would be a requirement.
The other thing, and I brought this up a couple times, that we see these scooters, and we see them doing things like two people on a thing or being where they shouldn't be, and there's no way to say identifying them. These scooters ought to be marked, so if you see one doing the wrong thing, you can say, well, it was scooter number 25 that was on the boardwalk when they shouldn't have been, or they had a three-year-old child riding on it, or going the wrong way down the street, and a way to call in an infraction. And are we?
So that will still be a challenge because they're moving, but we do intend for there to be a unique identifier on the scooters.
So there will be identification?
Yes, ma'am. They will be uniquely identified, but it's a challenge when they're moving.
Oh, I know, but at least before there was nothing, and you were just sort of helping us to.
They, the different vendors have different ways. Most of them have serial number, for lack of a better term, on them, but some of them are.
Well, you can't see that.
Engraved like a bicycle, yes, ma'am, correct. So we're.
If it's big enough, you can see it.
We'll try to make them more conspicuous.
Okay, Lewis, then Jess.
Thank you. The education plan, can you give me a little bit more information on how that's going to be?
Yes, sir, so we would like the vendors to outline literally a curriculum and a plan for examples and frequency, and again, curriculum of how they see providing education to riders. So it could be an event that is publicized, advertised on social media or through their app, that'll be at a certain date and a certain place, and it would, they do helmet giveaways there, for example, at these events, but they're pop-up events, or they're pre-planned, and that is, they're in a certain area in a parking lot of a business, or it could even be at a connector park, for example, that basically teaches folks how to use the device and what the rules are in general. So there, it's just a series of ongoing educational events that the vendors have to educate riders or anybody that might be interested in riding these devices, so.
Is there any way to identify those people who have been through the education process prior to allowing them to rent one of the vehicles?
So as a city, we would, we are not currently proposing to carry an inventory of folks that have been through the education or not, but the vendors would have, if they're a new rider, they could tell who has been, has gone through the education or not. Now, in addition to that education, on the app, when you bring it up before, as a first-time rider, you're required to read through it. Technically, you're required to read through your screen of the rules. So everybody that rents these are supposed to be reading through the rules that are on their app. Now, it's on a screen, and it's very long, but right now, we're not proposing to keep an inventory, a license. The city is not proposing to have a license, per se. If I could, just real quick, there is a bill that's been prefilled by, they'll get Lionel Spruill to increase the age of motorized scooters and motorized skateboards from 14 to 16. So that's in the General Assembly for consideration.
Jess.
Family member.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, yes, sir.
Thanks so much for putting this together.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm very happy to see the fees have been reduced. That was, I know, a very big concern, and a concern, particularly a concern of mine, because I don't want these scooter companies passing that cost to the rider and making this not a very viable alternative form of transportation. So I'm happy to see that. I have a bunch of questions, but I wanted to kind of hit on a couple of things that have been said. As far as the rules, are we, do we have a game plan to post some kind of signage in the heavily-used areas that say, in case you didn't read the app, here are the rules for being on the oceanfront or being at whatever location X is? I mean, I don't know that that would do much good in a neighborhood in Kempsville, but in, at the oceanfront, I think we could throw up a couple signs that said.
That one-time fee, which is $5,000 per vendor, would help to reimburse the city for producing the signs and posting the signs and maintaining them, but generally, they're pretty simple. They basically say if it's a, you know, no scooter zone, and it cites the city code so that police can enforce that.
I'm more interested in like the corrals where it says, only one rider per scooter, you know, you should wear a helmet, or, you know, kind of, if that's where they have to return them and pick them up, then theoretically, people should be able to see that right in front of their face.
That's a good idea. We will, we did not look at that, but something that we can consider would say having a QR code or something that refers folks to look on their app for all of that, refers them to all the, hopefully, very simply, the summary of the rules to use, in addition to what the vendors provide.
On the same vein, though, what is the plan for the city's infrastructure improvements? Because the thing that is making this work in all these other cities is how they're doing their infrastructure to accommodate them so that it's, people are able to use them safely. So are we, is there a plan to develop a CIP that paints the road, or, you know, what are we looking at? I mean, I think that's a big part of this conversation, because otherwise, we're just going to have the Wild West wherever these people want to use them, and it's not going to be, it's, I think it's doomed for failure.
Well, hopefully, this would run parallel with the ongoing effort of your Bike Ways and Trails Advisory Committee and the CIPs that are in place and proposed for Bike Ways and Trails throughout the city. So not only could these e-scooters use them, but pedestrians, runners, bicyclists could use them as well. So really, you wouldn't necessarily have to designate a new project, but you could direct the revenue towards one of the projects like the Virginia Beach Trail, which is the former Norfolk Southern Rideaway, for example. So there is a great plan in place that Parks and Recreation has been shepherding through the process that shows that existing network and proposed. So what I would say is that, you know, use it as a revenue source to help implement that plan that's already trying to get funding.
But there's not currently anything that we've got written down saying, hey, this is what we're suggesting.
Not for e-scooters, but there definitely is a lot of policy the city has with regard to Bike Ways and Trails, active transportation in general. There definitely is.
Well, I would like to see that we start looking at a very, a written plan for what incorporating this all over the city, because I think it's important that people who are using them outside of the oceanfront, which is what this conversation's always focused on, is how do they use them effectively, and we use that, utilize that as another viable solution for somebody running to the grocery store, picking up a prescription or something like that, and getting cars off the road. I had a question on the slide about the insurance requirements. Have we confirmed that there is actually a product out there that these scooter companies can purchase?
So like any business that would operate in the city rideaway or the city property, these are insurance requirements that the business would have to have, have to hold.
So like the non-owned auto and the hired and non-owned automotive, I'm sure there's a company, but I can't think of one that would give a company, another company, coverage for random drivers without some kind of pre-qualification for that. So that's what I'm, I would hate for us to set something that cannot be fulfilled.
So this is actually for the companies themselves, but not the riders?
It says it must include coverage for owned, hired, non-owned motor vehicles, as well as uninsured and uninsured motorists. So that would be anybody utilizing the scooter. Or is that meant to be anybody working for the company utilizing a company vehicle?
That's, my interpretation is the company, but I might.
That's what I wanted clarification on.
Try to defer to Dana a little bit over there. Hamar, do you have anything to add, Dana?
We throw it back to the risk manager, but I think you are correct. This is coverage for the company, not coverage.
Okay, that's what I wanted. I was nervous about that, because I think it'd be great if we could give coverage to the rider, but, okay, that's what I wanted to clarify. And then how are we determining who gets to be geofenced out of the program?
So we propose that because, as a business, they have to know where they're able to rent scooters or not when you issue the franchise license, right? So we would propose that those areas that are recommended here be at least for the first year. So the answer to your question was through the stakeholder involvement, where we tried to, most of these were actually already geofenced areas, like Town Center, for example. Shore Drive was one where there was a consensus of both the Bayfront Advisory Commission and the Community Shore Drive Community Coalition as a group that recommended some geofencing in their areas. So if additional ones come up over the first year, we can consider, you know, that, and we can consider, as infrastructure gets improved in the Shore Drive corridor, whether or not, you know, the e-scooter should be allowed in more of that area as well.
Are we going to have, though, a clear set of guidelines on how X neighborhood can become geofenced?
So. So we can develop those, yes, because it's...
I think that would be important, because I suspect that will be what happens, is there'll be neighborhoods that don't want to participate, and they'll feel like they're being ignored. And then, something you said about, when we were talking, when you were talking about the RFP and how many companies could potentially be participating, you said something about there's been so, X, so many vendors that have been, have shown interest. How many vendors have shown interest?
About five.
About five?
Yes.
Okay.
Two have been operating in Virginia Beach. Under the current law, three have indicated interest and said, we will wait to develop your franchise guidelines and respond to your RFP, and not enter into the city until that time.
What, about how many companies are there?
Well, it changes daily, but, for example, in Arlington, you have eight, for example. In the higher-density cities or markets that are, that businesses are looking to get into, it could be eight to 10 that are very active.
Okay.
Yep.
So then, I only have one other thing. I have a concern about the 1,000 scooter cap. I think that we should probably look more towards the dynamic cap that's based on the demand. I don't, again, going back to us artificially preventing competition in this field is going to drive the cost of this up, and then it's not going to be a viable solution for alternative transportation. So I understand if maybe we do this for the first year, but I think really, in the second year, at the very least, we look at giving the franchise agreement via how, what the demand is for the area. So if we see a demand for 2,000 scooters, we should reevaluate how many scooters we're allowing out there. And with the shared data, which I'm really glad, I'm really happy to see in this, that should be an easy thing to accomplish.
Yes, we will. The intent with the shared data is to find out what the demand was, and, yes, hopefully, take a look at that in year two and beyond.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody else? Michael?
I just wanted to, I had a question about the $1,000 vehicle cap.
Yes, sir.
And I think that in most instances, that may be a number that's just fine, but a couple of things come to my mind. One is that we want to attract the best, and I realize that term is subjective, but I'll use it anyway, the best operators we can. And with a distribution of a variety of operators and a low-vehicle threshold for each operator, it could be, you know, preventative for those best companies to want to do business here, and I think the consumers could suffer as a result. And so I wonder if it would be possible, and I think Jessica may have just mentioned this, to potentially consider what I think is referred to in the industry as a dynamic cap, that the city could, would have the ability to alter during very high-demand periods. That's something that I would be interested in seeing in the proposal. For example, Patriotic Festival, Something in the Water, other events that could happen throughout the city. Obviously, the resort is the, probably the most attractive place for an operator, but we do see wide ridership throughout the city. And so during the times when there are very, very high demand at the resort, it would be nice to maintain distribution throughout the city, and I think consumers would appreciate the option of having that mobility, additional mobility option, when those particular high demand periods exist.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Berlucchi. So since council sets the policy, it's whatever council as a body generally can have a consensus on. These are recommendations for year one, but, you know, those are great points, so it's whatever the consensus is we receive from council.
Aaron?
I would echo probably some of the sentiments already to be said with the Atlantic Avenue. If, and I understand this is, we're talking about entire city where we're introducing these mobile-use devices, but I would, the most apparent or the mindset that comes to me is the shared bike paths at the oceanfront, where you're going to have bikes, cars, and scooters all in the same area. And so I was just, the initial money is that going to bikes and pathways, I would like, we just automatically upgrade the markings on the pavement and the signage down there to, I don't, only educate the public, but we're introducing something new here as well. But then, on the other side, on the boardwalk, I don't think that the bike path and the walk path signs are doing what it was intended to do and notify people of what is the bike path, what is the walk path. Again, I run down there, I ride my bike down there, and there are always people walking on the bike path, and it's because the signage are right behind our beautiful, you know, shrubbery down there, so to speak, you can't see it. So I like, we need to update all those, the signage down there, as well as the markings on the pavement, and so people will understand, they might miss the sign, but they know the markings on the pavement, okay, I'm allowed to ride in this area.
Hey, Louis?
I'm curious, is there an inviting menace issue here with minors using these things, these vehicles? And are we covered under their liability for that type of issue? Mark?
So an attractive nuisance kind of argument. Well, I think the rules are requiring that, what's the minimum age that's to be required?
So the, currently, it's 14 with the helmet, but what the companies require is 18.
So we have contractual, they're going to be contractually obligated as provider of the conveyance not to allow people under that age to use them. I don't think as a municipal government, by issuing a franchise that has that requirement in it, you would have liability under an attractive nuisance or tort theory. I don't know what the insurance provision will say with respect to indemnity. We looked at, so there would be full indemnity anyway if there was a suit, so you should be protected from that.
Okay. Anybody else? Hey, you looking for a direction?
Yes, sir. Just seeing if it's, we'd like to move forward with issuing an RFP per the code requiring franchise licenses, you know, within a short period of time, and come back to you with recommended vendors, and during that time, you know, we can go over the ones that have been most responsive to the criteria that I went over with you today.
Does anybody have any problem with that or concerns?
I would just, I would like to see us do a dynamic cap instead of a 1,000 scooter limit. That's just...
I would agree, and it would be up to an identified administrator in the city, so we're not, we're not going to surrender control over the situation. I think it was a reasonable request.
The other thing I would add is, when we had something in the water, we had plenty of people saying they were going to, everyone was going to start advertising Airbnb when we had clearly said not to. So I don't think it would be very thoughtful of us not to say, well, when we have these big events, and I think you made an excellent point, we have a big event where the demand is super high and is not going to ride for a long period of time, we should have that flexibility.
Anybody have a problem with the dynamic cap?
I would say, I understand the reasoning behind it, but I think the way the staff is going with doing the first year with this in a controlled, measured way is probably, probably the best way to do it. I keep going back to, not so much at the oceanfront, but primarily in Louis's district, when I drive down, and it was just, they were all over the sidewalks, you know, scattered around, and I can just imagine if we had double or triple that amount, you know, it was, it was a problem. I think that you go with what the staff suggested, and then if it looks like it's not a sufficient quantity, then we move on from there. I mean, I think it's clearly attractive to five companies already, knowing what these caps are, so I think, I think we shouldn't have a problem. But I wouldn't support that.
Well, we're going to have this reevaluated after one year, correct?
Sure.
Well, I would like to add my support for the dynamic cap, only because it would be subject to approval. Anyway, I think there's a cap that we won't go over unless there's special permitted, unless these special events get permitted, which we have to approve. So there's, I'm comfortable with dynamic cap.
And I think we could add some kind of provision that said that there was, there have to be a demand for it. So if there's no demand, you know, and I don't see why the company would put an excess amount of scooters out if they're not going to get people to actually pay to use them.
And it is cap. Yeah. Sabrina?
Can I have some information on the pros and cons for the two options?
Okay. So the pros of a cap of, say, 1,000 scooters, as we've, as been recommended, would be that you know the number that is being managed, everybody in the community knows how many there are, and you can't manage what you can't count, right? So the thought behind it was that initially, when we started talking to these companies, that was a total number that they indicated they thought the Virginia Beach market could support. So we aligned with that. If it's dynamic, it's a little bit more difficult to manage and enforce, and just like this issue in general, not everybody is going to agree on whether, you know, you allow more or less. So our thoughts were, for year one, that getting the data to help us, inform us whether or not we had the right cap or the right methodology to establishing a cap, would, you know, we'd make it based on data. So our thought was that was a recommendation for year one, since we haven't had any data legally given to us to make a recommendation on. We've asked for some, some has been provided to us. None of it was really allowed to be made public, so we would like to use that data from year one to help make a recommendation moving forward. That was our thoughts, is that...
Good.
Thanks, Nick. Thank you.
So what if we did kind of the best of both worlds here? You started with the 1,000 cap, and then have some provision in the franchise agreement that allows an operator to, mid-agreement, come back to the council and request an increase? I mean, that might do it, and that gives you kind of the best of both worlds and makes your 1,000 dynamic.
That seems to be about, kind of like, Mr. Mayor, kind of what Norfolk did. After six months, they, I believe it was six months, came back and increased their number.
Would that be fair?
Well, what if, I like, I like where you're going with that. What, my concern is these special events primarily. I mean, where we know we have a higher demand for things, I'd almost make, say, what if we gave the operators the ability, when we knew a big event was going to happen, to apply for additional scooters?
You know, as long as they can apply, yeah.
Yeah, well, I thought you meant like, at six months.
No, I said at a time. Just a real quick question. Special events are usually at the resort, so are you actually asking for a waiver of the 40% limit of the total fleet in the resort, or you want relief from the cap, or you want vote?
With special events.
You have to do both.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll build in the flexibility on both.
Yeah. If they can, if you can build flexibility into it, you know, that would allow for an expansion based on demand, you know, because once again, this is kind of a nouveau technology that we have here, and then, you know, but once again, we're the year, we can certainly make any amendments going forward after the year. But as long as you got the flexibility built in, that would allow for the, you know, for the expansion, I think that's the best of both worlds.
Would that be, I just want to be clear, there would not be a time limit placed on that flexibility, correct? So they could apply at any time in the contract agreement?
Was they asked to apply back to city council with...
Yeah. They would have to come back to council, but they would have to, I guess, be data-driven, you know, based on that. Is that the assumption?
Well, the reason I'm asking is because the award would be given, would be offered in April, correct?
Yes, sir.
So the demand likely would occur in the summertime?
That's when the highest demand has been for the scooters.
You want to make sure that any process we implemented, in my view, would be responsive enough to accommodate their application in a timely fashion, and the demand will be ramping up shortly after they receive the contract.
Is, sorry, I'm not trying to get into policy, but I have a question. Would there be some middle ground where you would say there is some percentage over the limited cap that the administrator could approve for an event without coming back to the council, but anything over that allowance for a special event requires council action? And that way, you're not coming, they don't have an item on the agenda right before something in the water, two days after they've gotten their franchise?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Is it dynamic acceptable?
That makes sense.
Thanks, Mark. Just about that, see? That's good.
Okay.
What's that number? Is it 20%? Is it, what is it? What do you want it to be before it has to come back to you?
Would it be 20% of the demand, or 20% of 1,000?
A cap. It would be a percentage of the total that, a percentage of 1,000, basically.
How about 25%?
But it wouldn't be a percentage of 1,000.
A percentage of...
It would be a percentage of 250 or 50.
What was awarded, yes, ma'am. It would be a percentage of what was awarded.
So you're, if they only have 250, if they only have 250 scooters, then they could only get, what, another 50?
Would that be okay?
But that's 50 times four.
I assume there's four operators.
Yeah, but you're talking...
One operator could, in theory, have all...
It could be on one operator. You never know how it's going to shake out.
Yeah, I think, you know, but you're going to be bringing the franchise agreements back, so...
Okay.
We'll give some...
We have to give, okay.
We do have to get something on the street, and we do have to...
Yeah, I'll tell you what, would it be okay to at least get moving forward based on, you know, some of the recommendations here, and then, I guess, we're going to have to wait and see how many people actually do apply, correct?
They're going to want to know, though, frankly, Mr. Mayor, if there is that flexible, if there is a dynamic pricing, or is it a set or not? And if it's a set, I mean, if it's dynamic, what the percentage is, so that they know. So it would be helpful to have something to start with. Is it 20% or 20, whatever it is, but...
20% sounds like people are comfortable with it.
20%?
All right, we'll do with that.
They can always come back.
It's on events.
And then they could always come back for more, correct? So, you know, it's that they would have the opportunity to come back.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, good discussion and good suggestions, good modification. Next up, Mr. Leahy.
All right. Mayor and members of council, last fall, we briefed you on our efforts to use federal grants to both elevate homes and also acquire some homes. The Office of Emergency Management is, wants to come forth and discuss with you a proposal where we would consider expanding that program, and we would get in the business of mitigating some of these properties directly that wouldn't actually qualify under the federal rules. And there's some very attractive possibilities, improving our standing in the CRS program, lowering insurance rates to our residents. So I'm going to let Kim Tempesko from Office of Emergency Management brief you on our proposal. We also have...
Thank you, welcome, Kim.
And we have Aaron Sutton, the head of the Office of Emergency Management.
You've actually given the entire presentation, so we're done. No. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, and Mr. Leahy. I want to thank you for allowing me to come back and speak to you again this afternoon. The last time that I was here, I was here to talk to you about the update with our FEMA programs, and today's proposal is really just to kind of build on that discussion and talk to you about a budget proposal for a city-funded program to fill the gap that exists between the, where our funding sources fall short. Just to kind of refresh your memory, as we've discussed, since 2010, we've navigated the federal grant program, and have finally figured out a process to allow us to continue to make the most out of those programs, but they do remain very restrictive. We've got the federal funding, we do have some HUD funds. Housing has expanded their program a little bit to allow some flood mitigation projects, but those are very income-restricted, and Public Works has some stormwater programs to the extent that any of these properties might fall within something they'd like to use. And then there is post-disaster funding available in the state after we've had a disaster. And of course, the homeowners do have a few options on their own, such as some rehab loans that they're qualified for, and also increased cost of compliance, but that's capped at 30,000, and that's very restrictive for a lot of the homeowners as well. And the reality is, though, there is still just a very... And the reality is though, there is still just a very significant funding gap for the large majority of our most severely affected properties. So when I was here last, we had some questions from you all and then we had some follow-up questions, you know, some great questions on some different properties. And, you know, after eight years, it's just kind of time to invest in a local program to assist some of these properties that fall within the funding gaps. What we're here today to recommend is we're looking at a one and a half million dollar initial investment and then a five hundred thousand dollar annual investment. We've researched a lot of the local programs and, you know, these amounts are smaller than a lot of them have started out, but we're trying to be respectful with budget priorities that exist and hope that we can begin a program and, with these amounts, and then demonstrate a positive return on investment. Just as kind of a reminder, and I won't read through all of these, but, you know, this is the benefits of flood mitigation. The home that's pictured there is one of our elevations, that was just a basic elevation. That's what's covered under the FEMA grant. And that just kind of illustrates some of our successes so far. The big, the big information here is the flood insurance reduction benefits. Those listed there are the actual reduced rates that our homes that we've elevated have seen. The biggest one, and I did have this in my presentation last time, was down from ten thousand to just a little over five hundred. And then the other one was seven thousand down to four seventy-two.
These are annual reductions, annual costs and annual reductions.
Yeah, exactly. And then since joining the CRS, our citizens are currently saving fifteen percent. But if by instituting this program, we will be very easily able to move another class, which will save them another five percent or another four hundred and thirty, almost four hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Put this slide in here just to kind of give you guys an idea. This is all of the existing funding that we do have, the FEMA grants, the Public Works CIPs, HUD funding. There's other grants that are available, such as NOAA and some post-disaster things when they are eligible. And then, you know, some homeowner funds, insurance benefits and other benefits. So what we're looking to do is get some city funding to kind of incorporate and pull it all together into an overall program for parcel level mitigation. Some of the proposed actions, and we've been working with Public Works and Housing and other departments, you know, these are, it's kind of the, runs the gambit of the flood mitigation actions that would be possible under any program. Of course, what we would look to do is utilize the best action for that particular house, that homeowner, that property, and go based off those recommendations and then the benefit cost analysis for that property. So, for example, some properties, we can eliminate all of their future flood risks just by moving their utilities from their crawl, and their duck work from their crawl space up into their attic. Other properties, we've found through some of Public Works' studies that they're always going to flood even after any of the stormwater projects. So for those homes, they might be best to be acquired. But that would be really a property-by-property look at those. Without getting too much into the weeds of the program development, we've got an ongoing work group that we would propose turning into a task force and work very closely with our consultants that are already on contract to develop the program. And we want to be able to expand the program with the changing needs of the community. Dewberry, who's been working with Public Works, has been issued a work order with tasks to assist with the development of the program. We've met regularly with them. We've got some representatives from Public Works here to help answer some questions on those. But the recommendations would fall in line with what they've seen on their sea level rise policy report, as well as the individual building and site level risk reduction strategies that they've been developing, as well as the wind tides and sea level rise in the southern watershed study. So we're kind of, you know, working with them on the program and to kind of tie it all together without having competing agendas there. This is what you guys are probably most interested in with the return on investment. The FEMA studies and other independent studies indicate that mitigation saves an average of six dollars in damages for every dollar we spend. There have been studies that are actually as high as twelve dollars on, for every dollar. And then, of course, the additional savings for moving the CRS class would be an additional four hundred and seventy, four hundred and thirty-seven thousand as well. So, you know, with the initial investment, we would see a great return on investment right off the bat. And then that four hundred and thirty-seven would be an annual savings to our residents on their flood insurance. So the proposal that we're putting through of the, you know, the five hundred annually would basically be offset by that right off the bat.
Questions, Rosemary.
I have an idea of how many homeowners that, just to affect for a year, and I know because of.
We have, the ones that are on our severe repetitive loss list, we have over six hundred that are repetitive loss and we have about eighty that are severe repetitive loss. Not all of those, some of them are just too large to benefit. But probably at least half of those would be able to benefit in some fashion from it. And we also have some properties that aren't on that list because they're not insured. If they're not insured, they're not on that list. That's a list that we get right from the NFIP. So if they don't have flood claims, we don't have that list. However, we have documents from a lot of them where they'll call us after a storm and they're like, well, I flooded this many times and blah, blah, blah. And I'm like, well, you're not on our list. And it's, their answer is, well, I don't have flood insurance, so I paid, you know. So it would take into account some of those homes as well. If they've got documented flood claims that they're not on our repetitive loss list, we could still factor that in as well and considering what their benefit cost would be.
Yes.
Can we find out from FEMA, the people that received grants for their repairs?
Insurance claims or?
The people that didn't have insurance but applied for the grant.
For individual assistance?
It's all protected by the Privacy Act. We couldn't, the most we could ever get from FEMA, Matthew being the biggest thing, sorry. Sorry. So the individual assistance program that offers the grant funding after a flood, that is protected by the Privacy Act. The most we can get is the number of people that qualified. So that is one of our big challenges that we have.
They would have to self-identify and then provide the documentation that they received the grant.
And we can figure out some of them because we know homes that have been renovated since then. And, and we can figure out some of them, but it would have to be a self-identity.
I know there were a number of houses in Kempsville that fell into that same problem where they didn't carry insurance but paid for it out of pocket and maybe took a loan or one of the grants.
Right.
And that's the biggest thing here is we're very dependent on a federal program. The state still has yet to fund anything to help with sea level rise. So the next step is, because we always get calls and, hey, I got a call from this person or that person and they just don't meet the benefit cost ratio. They don't have enough flood claims or they don't have flood insurance. So a local program, beginning a local program would help us to address those that are falling in the gaps. And more and more are falling in the gaps because we have been utilizing the federal program.
If we were to try to mimic the assistance program that FEMA does, would we do something similar where we eventually try to recoup those funds from them? Like a loan, like a low-interest loan program or?
It's wide open for how we can do this. We've been looking at Charlotte. Charlotte has a program like this, a local program that people apply to for grants, low-interest loans, it's a, it's a wide variety. Forgiveness for five years on their property, whatever. So that's part of the development of the program. If we do get funding, how can we recoup this? Or if we buy a house and clear it off the lot and resell it? But we've been working with Becky Kubin with the BRAC, kind of looking at how BRAC was set up when those houses were bought out and things like that. So there's a lot of options out there. It's just, we wanted to bring it to you all to understand what we're looking at.
What, do we know, is there any prefiled legislation about flooding at all in the General Assembly?
I think there's a few that I've seen, really trying to get some funding into the sea level rise fund. But it's, it's sitting there, I'm not sure what the outcome's going to be.
And a lot of that is not individual properties either, it's bigger projects. And like she said, we've been working with Becky and then also Kay Wilson with Public Works as well. And some of the other things, you know, we're talking about incorporating a lot of different things. And yes, low-interest loans and all are, you know, part of the.
It's not a one-size solution.
No, it's not. And we're just, yeah, we're just at the point now where we can't move forward with any of it without some sort of funding to, you know, do that. So, you know, we've been working very closely with Public Works and they've got their consultants already doing a lot of the pre-work. You know, we just, right now, if we were to institute what they're working on and we get these homeowners to apply, unless they qualify for federal programs, we're going to have to say, okay, you know, sorry, that, you know, that's, you know, we'd love to help, but the funding kind of stops right here, right now, so.
Can we, Tom, can we?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can we ask Bob to pull what's in the General Assembly right now?
Yes.
Thank you.
But I would want to, again, stress, for the initial investment of a million and a half and an ongoing cost of a half a million, we are hoping and expect to drop down another class in our community rating system. And that would save our hardest-hit homeowners in terms of flood insurance, four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars per year. So we get to the point where the investment we're putting in is almost, almost recovered directly from the residents, but also they won't be seeing these impacts. So there'll be that additional savings that future damage, that was the big green part that you were showing, the big light blue part there. So we think this is some, it's a small program now and we'll get some experience under it, under our belts. It may be something that we do a lot more of in the future. But the programs that we have right now that are funded by others, the homes, there's just a very, very small number of homes that qualify. This would let us decide, you know, for the homes that we think ought to be mitigated or ought to be acquired. And would all be voluntary, of course.
Barbara?
So if we are just starting a local program, then they would not have to be on one of these repetitive loss lists or that would still be a criteria? Or we can just do it however we want, is that what you're saying?
We would set the criteria. And the great thing is Charlotte has a really good model. You know, you get a point for being on the SRL list. You don't have to be, but maybe you get a point when you apply it. So, so like you said, we can adjust this program, however, I don't want to limit the list because there's people that are not on the list because they don't have flood insurance, can't afford flood insurance, so we don't want to be too terribly restrictive.
And we're not restricting to some particular part of the city, it's just?
Absolutely not.
Absolutely not.
At this point.
I mean, obviously, we've got neighborhoods that we're going to get more people applying, so to speak, from, but it wouldn't be limited. We would, you know, take, anybody would be able to go in there and put their information in and then we would evaluate their property based on, you know, what their particular property and what their needs and their desires are. So as far as being on the SRL list or not being on it, what we would look to do is have the open period for the applications a little bit ahead of when the FMA applications are so that if we evaluate these properties and they may very well qualify under the FMA program, we would utilize that program, which would leave the city funding and other funding sources open for folks that don't qualify for that.
So are we looking at this as being something to fund or not to fund in the budget?
Yes, ma'am. Anybody else? Yeah, Josh.
There's no risk of this jeopardizing the federal funding program?
Absolutely not, no. And in fact, for CRS, we get extra points and bonus points for developing a local program.
I just think they're not going to say, well, you have money, so don't.
No, the state does that a lot, but the federal doesn't.
And we would love for the state to, you know, come in at some point and, you know, us be able to put the state on there with some funding too. But to this, you know, right now, there's, you know, that's not a bucket.
And that's truly the ultimate goal of CRS. They, they're, they want to drive localities to develop a multifaceted program and not be just dependent on one program or another.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, thank you very much.
Easy group today. Thank you all very much.
All right, stick it in your, put the budget proposal.
All right, Mr. Johnson's working on it, so.
All right, so, whoa, we're doing well. Next up is William Landfair from Planning and he's going to give us a glimpse for the next two, actually this council session, right?
That's correct.
And next, and the one in two weeks.
Actually, the zoning administrator, Kevin Kemp, and myself are tag teaming tonight. So we'll, both. So we'll start with planning. First item up is a conditional use permit for an indoor recreational facility. The applicant is proposing a conditional use permit to operate an indoor recreational facility for a twenty-four-hour fitness center within a portion of a vacant unit within the Collins Square Shopping Center. The zoning ordinance allows an indoor recreational facility of seventy-five hundred square feet or less as a matter of right. In this case, the proposed facility is twenty thousand square feet in size and so the conditional use permit is required. There are no significant changes proposed to the exterior of the building. New signage is planned. We believe this to be a good reuse of vacant space. There's no known opposition and the Planning Commission placed this on their consent agenda. The next item is a conditional use permit for motor vehicle sales. The applicant is requesting the conditional use permit to construct a fourteen-hundred-square-foot building on the existing dealership site for the sole purpose of detailing vehicles. There's no known opposition to this application and we believe it to be consistent with the operation of the existing dealership. The Planning Commission placed this on their consent agenda. Next item is a conditional use permit for a craft distillery. The applicant is requesting this conditional use permit within an existing building on Laskin Road, which was previously occupied by the Purple Cow and more recently, the Americana Roadside Grill. A craft distillery is required to obtain a conditional use permit prior to operating. The building will contain both the distillery, as well as a tasting room, and limited retail space. Good screening exists on the site. We think this is another good example of a reuse of a vacant building at the resort. No known opposition to this application. Next item is a request for a conditional use permit for another indoor recreational facility. This one is for a rock climbing business located in the Pembroke Shopping Mall. The application will allow this facility of seventeen thousand square feet in the mall. It will include rock walls, fitness area with cardio and workout equipment and a yoga room. We believe the architecture will complement that of the existing surrounding mall. Again, no known opposition to this application and it was placed on the consent agenda. Next item is that of the Tabernacle of Virginia Beach. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for religious use. The existing church on the property operates by right today. However, the proposed addition puts the church over the square foot limitation that allows or requires a conditional use permit. And so this proposed addition will allow the church to expand the size of its congregation and have additional office and classroom space. There's no alterations proposed to the building exterior. Shared parking is proposed between the uses on the site and on the adjacent property. There's no known opposition. Next application is a proposal for conditional rezoning, conditional B two to conditional A eighteen. The applicant is proposing to rezone property at the corner of Princess Anne Road, a Nemo Parkway, in order to develop a residential townhouse condominium with a maximum of thirty-seven residential units. The property is located within the Princess Anne Courthouse Historic and Cultural Overlay District and so the Historic Review Board has reviewed it and issued a certificate of appropriateness. The application was also reviewed by the TA-ITA Committee and it was revised. The application was revised recently based on comments that they made, primarily related to setbacks. I will note that if this property was developed by right under the existing commercial zoning, it would generate as much as six and a half times more traffic, more trips, than the proposed townhouses in this project. Currently, neither Nemo Parkway or Princess Anne Road are at over. Currently, neither Nemo Parkway or Princess Anne Road are at overcapacity. We believe the proposal is consistent with the COP plan and ACUs, and it is in the lowest noise zone. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this application.
Barbara?
Yes, ma'am. I have had several emails, and, you know, this was... We're all on that November that didn't happen Plan and Commission meeting.
Right.
Which I wasn't aware that that was what had occurred. And I made a very serious error, because when I had my district forum for that November-December timeframe, I didn't realize that there were going to be two meetings in December. And I just put them all on the same date to be heard, the normal December Planning Commission date, which would have been the 12th, but all of these were heard on the 5th.
Right.
And so, there were people who had intended to go down, and they missed it, partly because I had put out the wrong date. But I didn't know that November had been missed. Maybe you notified us to that fact, and I missed it, but I didn't realize that. I didn't know it until we got this amendment to our legislative package, asking for the General Assembly to not require us to file things if the newspaper makes a mistake in advertising. And that was my first knowing that the November meeting didn't happen.
Right.
So, I have gotten several emails, interestingly, not from one neighborhood, but from the general area, because this is sort of plopped down in the middle, and I don't know if they will be here today or not. I did see the application presented at the Transition Area Committee. However, that did not have a quorum, and they did not make any recommendations. But they did make, ask a lot of interesting questions, which caused me to really look at this and have a lot of concern. I do have a lot of concern. And so, I do think it needs to be heard today. I'll ask my questions now, or I'll wait and ask them out in the open. But I think it does need to be heard. Whether we act on it today or, or let some of these questions be answered, that's up to the council. But that's why you didn't have any opposition at the Planning Commission. And I was really, you know, very concerned about that Planning Commission meeting, because there were only six commissioners there. And on this particular item, only five were able to vote. And I'm told that that still met the quorum, because there was one there, but you're saying because of conflict.
Right.
But since the Planning Commission just put everything on, on consent agenda that day, we don't have a transcript or anything that shows any discussion about some of these issues that I'm very much concerned about. But turning a, a commercial shopping center out parcel into a very dense residential area presents, as I see it, a lot of problems.
Okay.
And so, however you want to do it, like I say, I'll ask my questions out there or give you a sneak preview, but I do have problems.
Okay.
How are we on time? Might be better to answer them now.
Do we have speakers?
We do not have any speakers signed up yet.
There's no speakers on this, so.
Well, it still needs to be heard.
Certainly.
Yeah, why don't we hear it, and then we'll flush it out.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
One very good question that they asked, that you, I think you might have to find out, was if these are not streets, the access to this is all through shopping center drive aisles. How are school buses going to pick these kids up? And I think that might have to do with some kind of legal question of school buses driving through the shopping center to get to these people or whatnot. But to me, there are just a lot of unanswered questions that I'm very concerned about.
Okay, all right. Thank you. The next application is that of Verizon Wireless, and this is a conditional use permit for a communication tower. Originally, the property was rezoned, and at that time, the city council showed on the rezoning plan an area reserved for this very use. Now, the applicant is moving forward with their application for the conditional use permit for a 110-foot-tall monopole. The applicant has provided all the necessary information, technical and legal information required for this pole. It is designed to accommodate co-location for other carriers. And again, the Planning Commission placed this item on their consent agenda. I will now turn it over to Kevin for a few minutes to talk about those conditional use permits for short-term listings.
Thank you. Good afternoon, council. Welcome to your first batch of short-term rental conditional use permits. There are eight scheduled for the first meeting in January. I list them here. I wanted to throw it out there as to how you want to approach these. All eight of these items are in the Old Beach area of the city. They were all recommended for approval by staff and by Planning Commission. I'd like to begin with just saying how staff has, you know, gone about reviewing these. All eight of these applications, we've gone through, and they all meet parking, and they all can reasonably meet or have met all the other requirements of the ordinance. So, we have taken a approach on that, where if they meet the requirements, we're going to recommend approval. There have been several applications we are dealing with, and that will be forthcoming, that have had issues where they cannot meet parking and, and things such as those. In the month of January, all are on the consent agenda. So, I'm happy to talk about any of these applications in depth, or we could talk about them as a greater whole. Just seeking feedback, right here, we have eight applications on this and four on the second meeting in January. These numbers will increase. Our Planning Commission agenda for the month of February has 54 short-term rental applications, so.
Lewis, and then Jess.
Kevin, has anybody reviewed these with Mr. Tower, the East District Councilperson?
Um, not explicitly, no. No. And all four of these, and, or all eight of these and one of the four on the second are in the Beach Council District.
Say that again?
Uh, all these applications on the first are in the Beach District, Councilman Towers.
Jess and Barbara?
Mark, I have a question. As far as where, what are our parameters to approve or decline these? Is this like the daycare situation, or is this, do we have full discretion on declining it? Or do we need to, is it like with the daycare, we can't, we, they've applied, they meet the requirements as...
No, you have discretion, but you have to consider traditional zoning considerations and base your decision on that. Your decision has to be reasonable, and you have to be able to articulate what the problem was from a zoning perspective that, that gave you pause if, if you choose not to. But the standard for review by a court is deferential to the body.
Yeah, Barbara Hall Beach.
I don't know if you were asking a question. One of the things that we kept talking about in all that lengthy time we talked about short-term rentals was enforcement. And, you know, it's, it's fine that we've got these long lists of things that these people shall do. How are we going to enforce it? And the, the, one of the components in this particular area that I've had folks express great concern over is parking. How are we going to enforce parking? And, you know, okay, most of these houses we've got on here today are three-bedroom, which will allow nine people. And I think we're requiring three parking places. But a lot of times, you know, when people are going on vacation, they come in individual cars. And so, what happens to those additional cars? And how are we going to enforce things? Are you, are you comfortable that we've got an enforcement in place? Do we have the 3-1-1 up to speed on being able to be the capturing staff people for complaints? How are we going to look at parking?
Right, yeah. All the mechanisms are in place for the enforcement that we, we spoke about, the 3-1-1, the coordination with zoning. As you can imagine, right now, we really haven't had test runs on enforcement yet. We imagine as the summer season ramps up is when we'll start really getting phone calls on this. You know, with these applications, we're, we're making sure, we're putting the conditions in place where we do have teeth with parking to enforce. As far as, you know, getting out there and doing it, you know, I think we'll, we'll see how it goes when these things start to come in. Bobby, do you have anything to add?
I think it's a key point to also note that, similar to commercial applications that we do consider, they're required to show that they have the ability to do it, and we can't force people to park in the space. So, we review it to make sure that it does have the spaces available to them for those that are in the residential parking permit program. They, they have specific conditions that say they cannot have passes to park, so they will have to find other parking. It will be in their interest to park on the site, because they have to park further away than, than other people. So, for where there are restrictions, we have put conditions, and that will be easier to handle, because we have parking that will go out and in for us if those people are parking correctly and they don't have passes. As far as, again, similar to other commercial businesses, we're required to show that they have these spaces, but we can't say you must park in that space.
Okay, Mr. Wood?
I, I just, it's up to the council. We don't have speakers on any of these items, but this would be the first batch. And it's also Mr. Tower's district, and he's not here, so we may, we may want to consider deferring them.
I think that would be prudent. Would be prudent.
The 21st?
He will love us for it.
Yeah, somebody made a suggestion to me, you know, with these short-term rentals, if, you know, with consideration, even though it might not weigh into decision, if we had like an overview and spots about where these are and where the clusters are, you know, the distribution throughout the city, would that be a possibility?
Yes, absolutely. And as far as the conditional use permit applications we're receiving, we are keeping a running tally with our GIS on a map of where these are located. We did have one speaker at the meeting where these were presented to Planning Commission. The speaker was not in opposition, but they did voice question or concern about the consolidation of them.
Right.
And, you know, where they are, so.
This might be helpful.
Absolutely.
Okay, Rosemary?
On what grounds can we deny them?
Well, from staff's perspective, if they don't meet the requirements counsel set forth, we do recommend denial.
But if they've met all the requirements?
We're moving forward with a approval, a recommendation or for approval at that point, if they've met all the requirements. Now, Councilwoman Henley hit it on the head with parking. Parking is by far the biggest issue we're seeing on all these. Every one so far that, you know, we've gone forward with a recommendation for denial, it has been because of parking. So, that's definitely the biggest rub. Right now, that is actually, I'm thinking, I think that's the only thing that has caused us to move forward with a recommended denial.
Can you deny them because there's traffic in one place or geographically? I mean, is that a...
I think we...
That, that is not a factor that is included in your code. And I think at one point, there was a discussion about that, and, and there was a conscious decision not to pursue that. Again, what you can, and, and, and Bobby or Kevin, you can, you can contradict me if you disagree. Staff is looking to see if all of the boxes that are in your ordinance are checked. If all those boxes in your ordinance are checked, they're going to bring it to you and recommend approval for it. Their recommendation does not require you to approve any specific application. However, you have to take into account the fact that all those boxes are checked in evaluating whether or not granting the CUP is a good zoning decision. And your decision has to be based, it can't be arbitrary or unreasonable. So, if you have a concern, you, you probably should be able, you probably would want to check yourself and be sure that you can reasonably articulate what that concern is and why it is a zoning issue that would call for you to make a specific motion to deny or vote to deny. If you, if you deny an application, again, the, the, the standard for review by a judicial body is, is deferential to the council, but it's not a rubber stamp. So, if there are additional factors that you identify as you start looking at these additional applications that you believe, you know, augment or, or, or should have been included in the ordinance, I would suggest that you, you know, you look at that from a broader perspective and include additional requirements in the ordinance.
Okay, Barbara?
It's been a while. It's been so quiet. We haven't talked about short-term rentals for so long. Okay, I know that the renewal time would be five years. And if there have been difficulties, then it may not be automatically reviewed by staff. But what if you get a property owner who just absolutely does not comply? And over and over and over again, there are complaints and so forth. What do we have as, as a recourse for taking away a permit, or can we do that once it's...
Well, if they're violating the terms of the conditional use permit, there is a process by which staff comes back to you and, and asks you to, or gives you, puts it on for a hearing as to whether or not the permit should be revoked.
Does it have to go to the court to do that, the way I think?
No, this, this body can do that.
This body can do that?
And I believe you have done that in the past. Not, not with, obviously, with respect to short-term loans, but with respect to other conditional use permits.
Oh, sure enough, huh? I don't remember that, so thanks for letting me know.
I don't think it's been common, but I, I do think there've been one or two instances.
Yeah, so, you know, okay.
Well, if we are going to...
Yeah, I think we're going to defer, so at this point.
All right. Ah, Howard can jump. Thank you, Howard.
So, that's all of eight, items eight and nine on the agenda, and that's to, to 1/21?
Don't worry, Ford.
I'm sorry, okay?
That's the applicant's not going to be here on the 21st, so.
It's all one applicant, all of these.
Okay, well, we will now turn our attention to January 21st. I'm sorry, sir. Yes, sir.
Um, do we want to defer anything else that's in the Beach District?
When we, when we get to the agenda review, we can do that.
We were going to talk about five short-term rentals as part of the 21st, but I guess we can just defer that. Okay.
They would be deferred to February 4th?
No, he'll be, he'll be here on the 21st.
But the applicant won't be here.
Okay, they're a different applicant, so.
I, I assume so. Yeah, it's not the same applicant, apparently.
Okay, so I guess we can hold to discussing those items. Okay. So, we have 15 items in total scheduled for January 21st. 10 of them are planning items, and five are short-term rentals. First item is a conditional use permit. This is for a tattoo parlor. In this case, it is for permanent makeup, otherwise known as microblading. It will occupy a single room within a...
What are you looking at, Mark? What are you looking at?
It'll occupy a single room within a existing 1,900-square-foot salon located in a retail building along North Great Neck Road. No exterior changes are proposed to the building or to the existing signage. There is no known opposition to this application, and it had the full support of the Planning Commission. Next item is a modification of conditions. This relates to an existing borrow pit. In September 2005, city council granted a conditional use permit for a 20-acre borrow pit located on the west side of Princess Anne Lane. Since then, the removal of material from that borrow pit has not proceeded as initially expected, and therefore, the applicant would like to extend the date of closure of that application by five years. There's been no objection... There's been no objection from the Virginia Department of Mines, Minerals, and Energy, and all conditions from the original approval dated to 2005 will remain in place. There is no known opposition to this application. Next item before you is a street closure. The applicants are proposing to close a portion of the platted, unimproved, right-of-way cul-de-sac adjacent to their property and incorporated into their property located at 770 Woodstock Road. Conditions recommended include establishment of a public utility easement for a sewer line in the area and a possible private water line should one be required. These easements will be addressed during final plat recordation. There's no known opposition. Next item is a request for an alternative compliance for a commercial parking lot. A conditional use permit was approved for the property in 2010, which permitted a similar parking lot on the site, but it was never constructed. A total of 58 parking spaces are proposed. 40 of these spaces would be within a commercial parking lot, and 18 would be used for Ocean's 24 Hotel located on Atlantic Avenue. There is no known opposition to this application. Next item is a conditional use permit for an automotive repair garage. The applicant is a tenant in the existing building on the property. He was unaware of the need for a conditional use permit, and so he is rectifying that by submitting this conditional use permit. There are no changes proposed to the exterior of the building, and there's no known opposition to this application. Next two items relate to an application of the Atlantic Wildfowl Heritage Museum, which operates in the DeWitt Cottage, and they are seeking a conditional use permit for assembly use and a modification of conditions for an open-air market in order to host events at the property, which is owned by the city. The applicant plans to host up to 10 private events per year. Parking is available nearby in city lots, commercial lots, and nearby hotels. There's no known opposition to this application. Next item is an application for a conditional use permit similar to the last one. This is for an automotive repair garage located within an existing warehouse building in the Oceana South Industrial Park. This, too, stemmed from a complaint to the zoning division about fumes, paint fumes. The conditional use permit requires the installation of a paint booth, which we believe will rectify the oversight and problems that have occurred with this location. The property is located within the 70 to 75 dB noise zone and is impacted by the Navy restrictive easement. There's no known opposition to this application. Next application is that of Ocean Rental Properties. This is a request for a subdivision variance. The applicant is proposing to subdivide the property, which is 22,000 square feet in size, located along Shell Road, into three lots. Two of these lots will not have direct frontage along a public street, resulting in a lot width of zero. Therefore, the subdivision variance is required. The proposed subdivision will be similar to a pattern of development that already exists along Duncan Lane, which is the private street dating back to 1948. There was opposition at the Planning Commission, but the opposition, which was an adjacent property owner, found that this particular option with two single-family dwellings is more favorable than previous duplexes which were proposed for the property, and so they now support the application. Finally, item number 10. This is a conditional use permit for a bulk storage yard. This has been operating since 2009 behind an existing commercial building along Virginia Beach Boulevard. The applicant was unaware of a need for a conditional use permit. What he does is he stores equipment related to his tree-removal business, and in the past, he has also stored hardscape and combustible materials on the property, and he's in the process of removing those materials from the property per instructions, direction from the Fire Marshal's office. One of the conditions of approval would limit the use to a total of two years. Now, I'll turn it over to Kevin. Thank you.
I can run through these four items. These four items do show that we are getting applications from everywhere in the city. Majority of them are at the oceanfront, but we do have them. Item number 11 is up in Chesapeake Beach. It is a three-bedroom, single-family home. Three parking spaces are shown in the driveway. Staff recommended approval and Planning Commission recommended approval. Item number 12 is in the Glenwood neighborhood, is a single-family, four-bedroom home. The four necessary parking spaces are provided in the driveway in front of the home. There was no opposition. Staff recommended approval, as did Planning Commission. The next item is a town home. It is a one-bedroom town home in the Salt Marsh Point Development in the Beach District. The two required parking spaces, one for the short-term rental, but two, as it is a townhouse, there are two required spaces, are provided in the driveway in front of the dwelling. Staff recommended approval, as did Planning Commission. And lastly, a short-term rental application in the Old Beach neighborhood. It is a single-family home, three-bedroom, three parking spaces are provided in the driveway out front. As Bobby mentioned earlier, there is a condition associated with this that while it is being used as a short-term rental, the property is not eligible for guest passes with the RPP program. Staff recommended approval, as did Planning Commission. And that wraps up the four short-term rentals for the 21st.
And last item for the agenda for the 21st is a text amendment for, to allow eating and drinking establishments with drive-through facilities in the B-4K Historic Kimball Zoning District. This is scheduled for the Planning Commission for review tomorrow for the text amendment. Staff is recommending approval of the amendment as well. This addresses some concerns of dealing with existing market conditions in the area and allowing for, with the ability to ask for a conditional use permit when appropriate with the design to provide a drive-through facility with eating and drinking establishments.
Okay, thank you. All right. Is that it? Okay, thank you all very much. Our council liaison report. Council comments. Jess?
I'd say one of the silver linings of all the conversation we've been having yesterday and today is, I had the opportunity to speak to a large number of constituents that work in building two, and one of the things that kept coming up, Tom, was there's a lot of concern over the workers' comp and how long it's taking. So, I was hoping perhaps we can get a briefing from risk management and just kind of what the normal process that people can expect. I don't know what the parameters would maybe be, but it was something that I kept hearing over and over again, and so I'd just like to know what we can expect and what kind of expectations we should be setting as well.
All right.
That's it.
Okay, Sabrina, then Barbara.
I have a request. I'd like to make sure we put on our agenda to discuss the safety measures related to the resolution that I brought up over six months ago. I do see that...
That's what I was going to bring up as well, so I have copies here.
I do see that there is a letter that was sent out December 20th with regard to some proposed, I believe they're proposed because we never talked about them, but it was sent to the General Assembly about some of the things that the city is supposed to do. But I'm hoping that before we commit to any of these things, because I've been asked about the letter, and I was asked about who made these recommendations and will we include it in this letter, which I have no knowledge of. I just saw it recently, and so I'm, I do have a concern which relates to why we were not privy to this letter, but then the request is to make sure we put this on our agenda so that we can discuss the security measures, because I've requested to make a proposal on a resolution for those safety measures as well.
Mr. Leahy, on the next...
I'm trying to figure out exactly what you're talking about. Are we speaking of the recent letter that was sent by one of our delegates?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I'm speaking about the letter that was sent by the mayor on our behalf to the delegation.
Okay.
It was sent by the mayor, right?
Yeah.
Right.
And Mr. Leahy, you're gonna be giving an update at our next meeting, correct?
Right. I think the letter that the mayor sent the delegation came about when there were questions, Bob Mathias was getting questions from the delegation as to whether or not we were in renovating our buildings, Building 2, and then ultimately this building, and then ultimately Building 11 after we moved everyone around. The question was, was whether or not we would incorporate the latest and best thinking on security measures. And of course, the answer was, well, of course, we will. And I think that was the purpose of your letter, to assure them of that.
Right, and it was during the break-in, but also, you know, we wanted to give an immediate response, okay? And, you know, but once again, Mr. Leahy is prepared to give an update based on a number of the recommendations going forward.
And I appreciate that, but is there a way to better communicate these items, correspondence, so that, you know, council members are aware, or at least, you know, as a council member, I'm aware? Because if I'm asked about a letter that was sent on my behalf regarding security measures, I think it would be prudent that we know what is being discussed, and we had not discussed this.
I'll take the blame for that.
Is there a better way that we can do, that we can communicate these types of responses, correspondence? Because this is actually the second time that I know of, because I'm not sure what else has been sent out, but that I know of that's happened, that I have actually addressed the matter before when Dave was here, and I was told that you work on it, but here we go again. So, I really, really need to make sure we're communicating, better communicating these things, because I don't want to be caught off-guard on such a very important matter as this.
Okay, Mr. Wood?
And I just request that before we talk about specific security measures, that we have an opportunity to talk to city attorney, because I don't think a lot of this stuff should be discussed in an open meeting.
But it needs to be discussed at some point, and we need to be privy.
Excuse me, I saw the floor. I saw the floor, so...
Well, go ahead. I thought you were finished, but take the floor.
I'm still talking.
And then I'll respond.
That's up to the mayor, but...
No, it's not.
Come in, let's be civil here. Come on.
Anyway, I would just like to have an opportunity to talk to city attorney about this.
I'm not three years old. I don't need him to say that.
Okay, you know, once again, I think, yes, you know, communications have to be thing, but once again, when we do get a request, you know, that, you know, and we do have accurate information, you know, that goes out to the general, but we will make sure in the future that all council people will be copied on it. And the thing is, the mayor, Vice Mayor and I did request that in the next workshop, which is going to be next week, that we give an update, you know, on, you know, just an interim update on what actions are being taken, you know, and with respect to, you know, some of the recommendations going forward. But certainly, it should be a council discussion, you know, in terms of, obviously, building safety and safety in general is going to be paramount going forward, and those discussions will be, obviously, be brought up, especially as we're now going into budget season.
I appreciate, I'm just, I appreciate that. I'm just saying that this was brought to my attention. I was asked about it, I didn't know, and I just want to be kept in the loop.
You will be.
That's all.
Okay.
I think that's, that's not a hard ask.
One of the issues that I was bringing up dealt with this in this resolution that I think it just passed around, that we did adopt in June, that said that 30 days, approximately 30 days after we got the investigations report, that we would get a report from the city manager evaluating our security measures. And I just wanted to make sure that hadn't been dropped off the list of things. But I think when we were talking about this back last summer, and of course, this was in June, this was, we adopted this June 18th, so everything was still very fresh, and I just remember that we were talking about not just these buildings that are impacted, but all of our city buildings now that we really have to be concerned about security. You know, our recreation centers, our fire stations, our libraries, because the public is in and out of all of our buildings, and that we really wanted the employees to have input on this, and I just hope that this is going on, because I think the employees who work in those buildings are the best people to give us some ideas about what they maybe feel uncomfortable with or think should be done or could be done, and I was just hoping that we haven't dropped this, because I think it's pretty important.
Okay, Ms. Leahy?
We haven't dropped it. We are in the process right now of preparing a review and a response for the Hillard Hines report. We expect to come back to you in mid-February or end of February, right in that timeframe. There were 58 recommendations in that report. I think 27 were human resource recommendations, and 20 were police, and I think 11 dealt with, well, I say police, public safety recommendations, and 11 dealt with facilities management. And we are going through each and every one and preparing a little bit of an analysis, a short brief. Is this something that we think is reasonable or feasible? What would be the cost? What would be the expected benefit? And we, that is part of our response that we will owe you. I can't really explain as far as what would have happened from 30 days from June, you know, July 18th. I don't know whether or not something that Mr. Hanson may have sent forward, he thought met this requirement or not, because I have to tell you, I wasn't focused on this resolution. I'm sorry.
I think at this time, we were pretty much involved in emotions and wanting to make sure something was going to be done, and so there's nothing magic, I don't think, about that 30 days. I think it's whatever is reasonable, and now that you have all those recommendations from the investigative consultant, not only dealing with the buildings, but, and the safety and so forth, but all of these human resources things, which I think some of them sounded a little questionable, whether we could really do because of employees' privacy and so forth and so, but I guess now that the state is possibly going to be doing an investigation to see if we are doing what they said we were going to do, it would be very timely if we do have a review so that, you know, we have some input as well, just to make certain that we haven't dropped this one. The other point I wanted to ask about, I think it looks like on, and somewhere in here, this report, when we're doing what, next week, we will have a briefing on the homelessness issue, and I had asked if we could maybe have a time, a day or two, that it would be agreeable with the folks over at the Housing Resource Center if we, who wanted to, went over there and got some kind of briefing on what they're doing, what the experience they have had in the last year, to know how things are working, because we expected that to be a really very important component of how we could address homelessness. But, you know, we also have these other questions that have popped up, and, you know, the panhandling that seemed to get worse just as we opened the Human Resources Center. How did that happen? So, I think we really need to, it would be good for me anyway, and maybe I'm the only one who wants to go over there, to be able to go over there and see what's actually happening and hear from them what their experiences are. I think this briefing would have a lot more impact.
Do we have a little idea about when and how many people would like to do that?
It'd only go two at a time, so, you know, maybe they would pick two days that we could agree to go over there or something.
I thought you invited brass.
Well, that might be tough on the residents over there. We don't want to do anything that's going to be intrusive.
I wouldn't mind going again. I've been there and been in communication with the staff. I wouldn't mind going again.
All right, I'll work with Housing and Human Services, and we'll set something up. If I might go back, back up to the previous information, we were talking about the security in the Hillard Hines report. The Hillard Hines report, at least just about two dozen times throughout the report, from the beginning to the end, indicated that there was no way that anyone would have been able to anticipate what happened... that this individual had telegraphed any of this, or that there was any way we could have known. And the vast majority, if not all of their recommendations, were aimed more at different security measures than would have addressed this. And they say, you, that is in the report, that these would not have made a difference in this situation. They are aimed more at, uh, best management practices for security and best management practices for human resource, um, uh, management issues. But again, and, and we will, part of our response will let you know whether this would have in any way affected the, uh, what happened on that terrible day.
Well, I think, I know, we, we talked about security a lot when we were looking at the design for this new building that had already been designed. But we all anticipated, uh, security from an external threat. I, I don't, just don't think we ever thought of an internal threat, which now is another thing we have to look at. But I guess a lot of those human resources elements were geared to the employees. So it's expanded so much, and I think now we just have things to think about that we never thought we would have to think about. And it's, it's pretty overwhelming.
Yes, ma'am.
Right.
But also very, very problematic, um, when it comes from, uh, and in, comes from an existing employee who was unbelievably private and very excellent at hiding what was going on from the, uh, from his workplace.
Now, we're down with some, you know, unfortunate national tragedy. Rosemary?
Um, just wanted to mention to the council that last Friday, I went to Richmond, because I'm on the State Broadband Advisory Council. And the FCC came to see, uh, that was really interesting that the federal government is now be putting nine billion dollars into expanding broadband, which is a huge help economically to a lot of underserved areas. And so the state of Virginia will be getting part of that, as well as the, uh, state budget has got a much bigger part of their budget going to broadband. And so, uh, part of that also is gonna be designated just for agricultural areas. So if there's some ag areas that don't have broadband, um, we need, and I've got the contact information to get in touch to apply for these funds.
Well, we were talking about that at the Senior Resource Center this morning, because we've tried to have an, an emergency preparedness plan. But what breaks down with us every time is communication.
But I thought it was really interesting that they have identified agricultural as one of the... Certain funds will be just for that. Um, it's really good to know. And the other thing I just, Barbara mentioned homelessness, and we deferred the tents on the, on the beach. And then that, the Penn Court case came out. It's probably something else we're gonna have to be, to be looking at. And, you know, do we provide another area? The beach is the place where we want, but maybe we need to be looking at providing a spot. If the resource center isn't enough, if the churches aren't enough, Penn Ministries, if the J C O C. is not enough, and they don't want to go to these places. They want the freedom, and that's, that's part of living in America. So maybe we ought to explore, you know, finding a place. Wanted to mention that.
Yeah, I think, you know, this is a discussion that we're gonna have to have. And yes, the, you know, but, you know, the other thing is too, that we may have to discuss one day, is the proliferation of panhandling that's out there and open streets and everything. It's a tough one, you know. How do you tell folks, uh, you know, not to make money? But, uh, you know, you know, not to get enough to live on, you know. But once again, you know, we gotta think about safety, people in the middle of the street and things like that. You know, that's why, you know, years ago, we, you know, had trouble, you know, ban the boot and everything, because we were, you know, we had concerns, you know. But once again, I think this will be part and parcel to our discussions, uh, going forward. Anybody else at this point? Barbara?
Didn't want to monopolize, but I just wanted to say that that very thick volume on the sea level wise.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm part of the way through. I'm sure all of you haven't made all the way through yet either, but I just want to compliment the staff on a lot of hard work to put that together. Of course, we've got a lot to discuss, and I suppose that's next week in the briefing.
I believe so. I was just looking at the schedule. Sea level rise program is for next week. Yes, ma'am?
But these dates are, are firm, and we can go ahead and...
Yes, those are, those public meetings are set.
Okay. Yes, Sabrina?
The only other thing I wanted to ask, um, I know that we're voting on the Ignite Business Series. Were there any other questions that anyone had about it, unfinished questions?
Could I just ask, is this in conjunction with what economic development is doing? Or is this in addition to?
I work with economic development, because, um, Taylor and I sit down and talk about the agenda and what's needed. So he helps plan, and we help plan and collaborate on the agenda. So I would have to say it's in addition to.
Because they, I think, I know with Patty, when Patty Phillips worked so hard on all of that, all those years, they had opportunities to get together with people and ask questions. And, and so they're still doing those things in addition to this.
Yes.
Michael? I, um, just have a, some feedback that's, I think, runs tangent to your proposal. And that is, council probably saw that, hopefully saw, that I, um, that I sent all of you an email requesting the city manager and city staff to develop a set of standard guidelines by which council members would have an even understanding about what resources would, would be available for council members sponsored events, and how those events would be promoted and advertised using city platforms. I think that's a fair request, and, and I think that those standardized guidelines will, um, help us all understand what's available to us and how we can best serve the public. I think it would be good for the council, and I think it would be, um, good for the public that we're all operating from the same, same guidelines. I realize that may not be developed in time for the Ignite Business Series, but I do think that's something that I hope the council will consider. And, uh, and I hope that it could be developed, um, quickly enough, and I don't think it's that complicated, that, um, that those guidelines could, would be, you know, incorporated into, into the Ignite Business Series, so that, um, we're all operating from the same sheet of music. And, and so that doesn't, that may not be germane to the conversation we're gonna have tonight, but I, but I do think it's one that's related to this conversation.
Barbara?
So, if, if I could, Mr. Leahy, is that something that you think that could be developed?
Yes, uh, we, we can, uh, push something together and come back to you.
Since you brought it up at this point, are these guidelines in effect for anything a council member does? Or only if we are asking for some funding? I mean, for example, I all the time do things and take my own food and...
Funding, the thing did.
Okay. It's only if there's, if we're asking for funding, but if we're doing things and it's not...
I would add support. I would add support from, from staff that may not be related to funding. For example, you know...
But if we simply say, staff is certainly welcome to come, I'm gonna be doing this, that's different from asking to staff be there.
I've never seen a time when the staff has not been more than willing to show up to any meeting.
I didn't know we had to go through the process.
So, if, if I can, folks, there, there's a number of speakers on that item, so we're gonna hear it anyway. So we can talk about it out there.
Okay.
At least in the past, just if I may. My experience has been anytime I've run into somebody from the staff who'd come to a function that I was involved in, whether it was a formalized function or as long as it was discussing city business, the staff was more than ready to come and do it. So I...
That wasn't, I don't question that in, in any way.
Is that not what you're talking about?
That's not exactly what I'm talking about. I'm talking about where, where it could be, where an event could be staged, would there, could, was there, would there be food? Would there not be food? How, what are the guideline, where would it be promoted and how by the city? That's different than by individual council members.
You know, bringing in paid guest speakers, things like that.
Yeah. It's not, I don't have an issue with any of those things. I would just like to know that I think we would all benefit if we were at an equal understanding of what resources are available.
Well, I know what the policy is.
Yeah.
I think the other thing we should probably have a good discussion on is social media and how that plays into what we do city business-wise versus not, you know, there's a very... It's a fine line when something goes from being a city event to being something that is promoting an individual. And I think that's where we could all benefit from clearly defining that line, whereas this is a city event under the X person as a councilperson versus something that could be looked at as, as promoting a person for campaign purposes. And I, I think with social media, that's, that's just, that line has gotten gray.
I, I know. I've never seen the city advertise, um, people's events other than city sanctioned events. Like, I'm, I've never seen... Yeah. So, I mean, that's the only thing I've ever seen the city advertise, is town halls and meetings. I've never seen them advertise people's personal events, so I don't know what's that about, great line. I just, I just, I haven't seen that from the city website, them saying, oh, you know, Councilman Rouse is having this private event over here, come to. I've only seen them advertise town hall from city sponsored events.
No, well, that's what I'm talking about. I'm talking about town halls. So I think it would be clear for us to know that these are the guidelines we've all agreed on for how the city will advertise the town hall.
But they only, they always just post it online or notified?
I think there are some other examples.
All right. I was just unaware. Maybe I'll, you guys, uh, bring me up.
I just wanna just make, clarify that any speakers that come to Ignite, I don't, they're not paid. It's free of charge. They're, they're not paid, just so you know. I don't pay any of them. And the city, the city does not pay any of them, volunteer.
Sorry, could I ask a question? That your resolution does, does make note of, um, payment for speakers? Unless it's been amended.
Just wanna make sure that's been taken down. Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Is that it? At this point, can we go to, uh, you know, agenda review?
Okay. Under ordinances or resolutions, we have speakers on items I-3B, four, six, and thirteen. I-3B, number I-six, and I-thirteen.
Please say that again.
I-3B, four, six, and thirteen.
Not five.
Not five. Four, six, and thirteen, and three B. Yeah. So, but, so beyond that, is anybody, any issues with ordinances or resolutions? Any of these that you want to pull off consent for once? Okay. Under planning, um, RHK Properties Motor Vehicle Sales of 2661, Virginia Beach Boulevard, that's Beach District. Do we want to defer that? Do we want to approve it?
I think we should defer it.
Does the council agree to defer that?
Yes.
Have a good, any consent?
We're talking about the short-term rental ones, right?
No.
Oh.
RHK, it's a motor vehicle sale.
Sorry.
Let's let it go forward.
No, I don't have a problem with that.
Put that off consent. Uh, item two is gonna be heard. Item three, HRVB Boulevard, Collins Square Associates, that's in my district, that's the Planet Fitness, I don't have a problem with that. Uh, item four, Beach Spirits LLC Craft Distillery at Alaskan Road at the Beach District.
I'll say defer, Lisa, the 21st.
Think so on this one?
I mean, I, I mean, I always like to give the district rep the opportunity to express themselves from it. They're not here, so...
I mean, it was unanimous of planning, right?
Yeah, but we still have... Yeah, I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm supportive. I don't have any against it. But obviously, the, the district rep isn't here. I think that makes a difference.
Do you want to defer the first one then?
Um, yes, if, well...
Stay one in the beach, too.
I mean, is it possible that these applicants are anxious to have approval?
I don't have a problem with either.
Yeah, I mean...
All right, so...
I'm sure they are.
Yeah, I'm sure the applicants want to get this done. I mean, does anybody else want to defer it?
I mean, we can, I mean, I, I just personally, I don't have a problem with either of the applications, but I'm just saying...
Okay. We'll do that as, as consent.
Yeah, so if you want to consent, that's fine.
Pembroke Square Associates LLC Indoor Reciprocity 4554, Virginia Beach Boulevard. Mr. Jones, consent. Uh, New Life Tabernacle of Virginia Beach, Ship's Corner Road, Rosal. Mike, yeah, okay. Uh, Selco Partnership Verizon Wireless Tower.
I've heard, have questions.
Okay. And then numbers eight and nine, we'll defer to February 4th, and that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Just a quick...
There we go. Yes.
A question. Um, depending on how much time we're gonna spend on one of these other issues, if it looks like it's going to, I mean, because I know some of the folks who are planning to come down on this planning item said, well, am I gonna get all caught up in the crowd?
It's like thirty hundred speakers we have right now.
Can we hear the planning items before that?
Is, is there, can we do that, Mr. Stiles?
I think you can hear them anywhere you decide.
Yeah, we can do that.
You know, after they missed the, the one in November, you know.
I just, I'm afraid that places will get filled up again, though.
Well, that's what they were afraid of. They may not even show up.
We preserve the let-hands act for all speakers.
We did make provisions for all speakers.
Not just...
Okay. At this point, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from the open meeting allowed by section 2.237a 11A. Code of Virginia is amended for the following purposes. Number one, publicly held property, discussions or considerations of the acquisition of real property for the public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to section 2.237a 3 Kempsonville District. Perspective business or industry, discussions concerning a prospective business or industry or expansion of existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating and expanding its facilities in the community pursuant to section 2.237a 5 Bayside District. Uh, legal matters, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such consultant pursuant to section 2.237a 11a 7, uh, regarding the impact of Knight Circuit case Martin versus City of Boise. And personnel matters, discussions, considerations, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of public body pursuant to section 2.237a 11. Council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. Do I have a motion?
Salute.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Call the roll.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Kinley?
Aye.
Ms. Moss, Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Rouse?
Aye.
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 Ms. Wilson? Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.